City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
The 21st.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Alderman Revelle.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Alderman Fisk.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Alderman Wynn.
Alderman Wilson. Nine zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, June 13th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements and proclamations. I would like to call for a moment of silence for the victims of the Orlando gunman.
Yes.
Anyone wishing to donate to the victims can do so at www.cityoforlando.net or www.gofundme.com. Pulse Victims Fund. And on a much more cheerful note, Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to announce that there will be a community service held for the victims of this past Saturday's shooting, plus pretty much all these shootings we've had, so many of. It will be held at 7:00 PM at Second Baptist Church, and that is this Wednesday evening. It's being put together by a group of clergy in Evanston and hopefully can represent the whole city. So, thank you.
Thank you. And it is now my pleasure to declare it Ian Gregory Sims Day, June 13th, 2016, whereas Ian Sims is an 11-year-old Evanston resident and a member of the North Shore Panthers Pop Warner football team, and whereas Ian has been named Pop Warner Academic All-American, and whereas Ian was ranked among the top 2% nationwide of the 350,000 kids who participate in Pop Warner academically, and whereas in the 40-plus-year history of the North Shore Panthers Pop Warner program, Ian is the first Evanstonian to be honored this way, and whereas Ian has received recognition from the Mid-America Pop Warner, the Chicagoland Pop Warner, and nationally at the Disney World Yacht Club in Orlando, and whereas Ian was a 5th grader at Dawes Elementary School when he received this acknowledgement, and will be attending Shute Middle School as a 6th grader in the fall. And now, therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdale, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim June 13th, 2016, as Ian Gregory Sims Day.
Carl Caneva, the Assistant Director of Health and Human Services, is here to talk about the event.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Carl Caneva, Assistant Director of the Health and Human Services Department. The Evanston Health and Human Services Department is proud to announce the first-ever Man's Health Initiative, "Man Up." Thank you. The event will be held on Saturday, June 25th, 2016, from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Robert Crown Park, located at 1701 Main Street. At the event, there will be health screenings, basketball games, soccer, and a challenging but fun obstacle course. Screenings will be provided at the event by Chiropractic First, Complete Chiropractic, Illinois Bone and Joint, the University of Chicago, and President St. Francis Health. We'd like to thank the Parks Recreation Community Services Department, the Public Works Agency and Fire Department of the City of Evanston for lending their resources on the day of the event, and we'd also like to thank the Chessman's Club of North Shore and the Cook County Commissioner's Office for their donations that made the event possible. The Health and Human Services Department encourages those who live, work, and play in Evanston to sign up by going to the website at www.cityofevanston.org/manup, or call 31 for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peach, Fourth of July. There he is.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Dick Peach. I am the Celebration Manager for the Fourth of July Association for this year's celebration. I want to make sure that you all are aware that we're having the party on Monday, on the Fourth. This year, we have a very special, special grand marshal for the parade. The theme this year we decided on was "The Fourth Awakens," taken from an obvious movie choice. And I don't know how many of you are aware of it, but back when the movie came out, there was a great big uproar on Facebook by a young lady who wrote the Hasbro toys. She was just livid over the fact that they had the brand-new Monopoly game out for Star Wars, and there was no female lead character. Rey was missing. And in the movie, Rey is where the Fourth awakens. Well, they took a lot of heat for that, and an awful lot of heat. 10,000, 15,000 write-ins. Everyone got up in a panic about it. It was written up, and ABC did an interview with her. It was all over the newspapers. Hasbro wrote an apology, publicly apologized for missing on the character. So, we did a little research. Turns out, that young eight-year-old lives here in Evanston. Miss Annie Rose, she is going to be our grand marshal this year, which we thought would be very special. Actually, we called her the night we decided on it, and she and her mom were just thrilled at the prospect of being the -- that we've loved the parade for years, so it'll be great to be the grand marshal. So, so be it. Annie Rose will be our grand marshal. So, we wanted to make sure you're all aware of it. Please come out. The celebration's going to be really great this year. We have a lot of new bands we collected this year for the parade, so it should be a lot of fun. You're all invited, all of you. And just to let you know, too, every year, we have a little thank-you party to thank all the people who worked to put the Fourth of July on. It's a very large army of volunteers who make this all possible every year, and we always invite the council and everyone there. And this year, we're combining everything together. We've had two separate parties all the time, so we're doing one. So, just mark the calendar. It's August 28th. It's a Sunday. Mark your calendar, save the date. It's going to be at the Hilton Garden Inn, and you're all invited. It's a brunch, and we're going to re-celebrate the Fourth and all the good things that happened over the festivities. So, please come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes my announcements and proclamations. City Manager, do you have any?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. We want to provide the council with an update of our continuing discussions with Straw Dog Theater. Alderman Rainey and I met with representatives of the theater on June 3rd to discuss the various pending issues. The theater informed us that they have obtained a temporary office and storage space outside of Evanston, and they are no longer interested in temporary space on Howard Street. We also discussed next steps with the theater project on Howard Street. Their Board of Directors has decided that the financial arrangements being discussed with the city for the building and occupying a theater on Howard Street no longer makes sense for them to pursue. In further discussions, the theater indicated interest in further discussions with the city for purchasing the property outright from the city, and staff will work on this proposal and return to the city council at a future date to discuss.
Thank you. City -- oh, Alderman Rainey.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I know this takes a vote of the council because it's not a standing committee, but I would like to refer to the Economic Development Committee for, hopefully, our next meeting, a full discussion regarding the properties on Howard Street going forward.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
Yes, Madam.
Madam Mayor, the council has to vote.
Oh, sorry about that.
On the referral.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. City Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council, I have a few corrections to make. I gave my deputy clerk some wrong information on the last meeting. Those who are running for candidates for the offices in 2017, you can start passing out your petitions after September 20th, and then you need to file between December 19th and December -- I mean, December 12th and December 19th. Also, if you go to my webpage, you'll find out how many signatures you need to get. Don't go over, because anything going over would be discounted, but make sure you get enough signatures that if you have a contesting of your signatures, you may have enough that you'll still be on the ballot. That's the most important thing, if you want to stay. The other thing is that the clerks' offices also now, I don't know if everybody knows about it, but we are preparing passports. We've got that back in business in the clerks' office now. So far, we've had 20 passports renewed or brand-new ones since we started last Monday. And I think that pretty soon, you will not be able to use your driver's license to get on a plane anymore, so it's best for you to go and get your passports now. Passport book and a passport card. So, if you need any of that, that's all on the website, City Clerk's website, so check that out. And you don't have to make an appointment. We're there from 8:30 in the morning to 4:45. After 4:45, we don't take any, because it takes a little while to get those passport declarations passed out. So, that's all I have for this day, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question, Clerk Green. Is it going to be the same cost to residents as if you were to stand in line at the post office in the same turnaround time?
Well, the turnaround time is, they say four weeks, but we've gotten them in two weeks. There's no -- if you come in, there's about maybe a 10-, 15-minute process, you in and out, and it is the same fees. We don't give any discounts, because it goes to the State Department.
And people still have to bring in their own pictures?
Yeah, bring in their own pictures. We do not supply pictures. We cannot do the picture-taking for you, so bring your pictures in with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can go to Walgreens or any place to get your pictures taken and bring them in.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Well, I just want to say that this is a fabulous service, which the city used to offer and then canceled it, and so I can't tell you how much I appreciate that you're doing this. Thank you.
And I would like to echo that. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. The first speaker is Junad Riske, then Jacob Hubert.
First, I'll comment on Straw Dog. they're going to be sold at a discount rate or something. And then, I suspect this is a ploy possibly to continue this along, abuse public financing for this. As a taxpayer, again, this is just another game of wasting time and money and effort of everyone on staff, and frankly, this is the kind of stuff we continue to have here. We don't have professional work, again, as I quoted it before. I think that the other thing I see tonight is, public money here seems to be used for so many private things. The city wants a $4.9 million line of credit for TIF funds to borrow against. This is basically using public money to private -- used for private purposes, and this money doesn't even get paid back. It's really outrageous how this whole thing works. Basically, we continue to give money to private citizens. Well, we don't have any money for Robert Crown. We don't have any money for Harley Clark. We don't have any money for anything, but we're giving money away to businesses that don't have any money to -- that can't get it in the marketplace. It's absolutely ridiculous what we're doing here. It's really ridiculous. And frankly, the other thing, you're coming up with a maintenance plan for Robert Crown? So, what you're telling the public is, "We don't know how to maintain our other buildings. We have to have a special fund for maintenance for Robert Crown," because we don't know what we're doing. That's really good. I mean, does that give anybody any confidence? And the thing I wondered about is, how are we going to pay for it? When I read this, it looks like we're going to increase the fees at Robert Crown dramatically to even develop a maintenance fund. So, that's interesting. It looks like almost 100% on the fees. Well, okay. I don't know if people are going to like that, but -- and this cradle-to-career thing, I know people probably think it's wonderful, but I don't understand what we're using the money for. It doesn't make any sense, again. $50,000 out of a contingency fund. I don't see anything about who's getting this money, what it's for, cradle-to-career. Where's the statements of this group's financial statements? Where's who's getting this money, and what are they doing with it? Oh, well, they're doing all these great things. I don't understand what they're doing. Of course, it's $50,000. Well, just give it away. Great. Really good. And finally, I see Gibbs Morrison keeps coming back, another $200,000 for Gibbs Morrison. And the mistakes we made there, we did hear again. It's a whole process of not doing work by staff to come up with a sound plan for Gibbs Morrison. It wasn't done. There was no program, nothing was established, no costs were developed, but we pursued it, and we continue, just like we're playing this game with Straw Dog. We're continuing on with no plan and anything, so we just keep adding money and adding money and not going anywhere. So, this is really, I mean, as I said, there's a lack of professional work here that really needs to be done. And until we get that professional work done, we can't make real decisions on what we're doing. And, you know, I don't think Robert Crown's going anywhere, quite frankly, with what I see here. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jacob Hubert. I'm an attorney at the Liberty Justice Center, and I represent the owners of the Beaver's Coffee and Donuts food truck. I just want to say on their behalf that we're very happy that the city is revisiting its food truck ordinance, and glad that, in particular, tonight, it's considering a provision that would repeal the city's ban on food trucks, like Beaver's Coffee and Donuts, that are based in Chicago and other places outside of Evanston. If the city makes this change tonight, it's going to be a great benefit, not only for startup entrepreneurs and small businesses like Beaver's Coffee and Donuts, but also for the people of Evanston, as they have more food choices. This item, I notice, has been recommended for immediate action by the city council, and I hope that the city council will take immediate action in approving this tonight so that food trucks can start getting licensed and people can start enjoying their products this summer while the weather's still nice. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Robert Beatty and Vennis Levy.
Rob Beatty, I'm a 15-year resident of Evanston, actually, August, in August. Also, about six and a half years in the 8th Ward. I frequent good-to-go restaurants quite a bit in the past, being in the 8th Ward. Good food, good owners. The Levis have been 14-year residents here. I'm basically here to, in solidarity with them, to talk about their -- how they treat I went to them after reading their story and just knowing a little bit about the council meeting. They were used to lure other businesses on Howard Street. I love Howard Street. I love where it's going. I'm pro-community development. I like the development of Howard, but I'm pro-community development. These are Evanstonians. I'd love to see it going forward. What are we going to do about the plan for the Levis? The Levis were left without anything here. I think there was a year of talks or discussions about them moving across the street at the outpost. Now that the outpost, we're going to have other plans with the outpost, I would definitely like the council to reconsider or revisit looking at the Levis possibly being in that slot, or being considered for that. I think it's a disservice to not look at longtime residents who have helped that corridor come about across the street. The Peckish Pig, and also Ward 8, when they were coming to town. My understanding from them is that they were used as someone who were upstanding business owners on Howard Street, and they were looked at as someone who have done the grunt work. So, I would ask that the council look at this again, look at something, some kind of alternative, but they need an answer. They need an answer. And going forward, I think we can do better as a group in just not missing this point of, you know, they kind of walked away from this situation feeling a little dirty. That's the word I used. And I don't want any resident to feel that way, but they should be considered, and I'd love for the council to revisit this as you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So, after tonight's hearing, I guess I'm a little disturbed just hearing that, again, we are being postponed with the decision on what to do about the outpost. At first, it was the possibility of Straw Dog needing it for the theater rental, and now that's not on the table any longer. So, I'm just asking that you please consider our proposal to be able to move forward with our plans to lease the property. And it's just, you know, I read on Evanston Now how there's another restaurant that's possibly considering coming from Chicago to Evanston, and it's been, you know, well-received. So, I still don't quite understand why we are not a viable option. We have our own financing. We have been in business for 14 years. We have a proven track record. All that we're at, we're Evanston residents for more than 18 years, Evanston residents, and we are an intricate part of the Howard Street corridor coming to life. When they were recruiting new tenants, they always used our restaurant as an example of what's to come. And now that they have, you know, been able to, or whoever's involved has been able to lure these businesses in, using us as an example of what's to come, we're just asking for our fair share, our fair opportunity to expand and grow and have, you know, some of those opportunities. We're being constantly road-blocked, gridlocked, you know? So, it's just really, you know, disturbing to hear that Straw Dog is off the table for the rental, and now, you know, there's still no, you know, interest in allowing us to move forward. I was told, Madam Mayor, you told the staff to work with me. I have not had any success with working with the staff. Nothing has been accomplished since the last time we were here. It's been four to six weeks now, and nothing has come to fruition with working with him. So, I'm just asking if you all would please consider to allow us this opportunity now. It seems like it's a clear-cut opportunity, because they are no longer interested in renting this property, and that was the only thing that was brought as a concern of why we should not be able to use the space. So, I just ask that you please consider us again. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please? But I will be. Well, I know that the first item on the agenda is the minutes. And Clerk Green, I do have a correction. I believe that it shows that Tara and Vine, the liquor license, was approved at our last meeting. It shows, introduce suspension of the rules and action, and that did not happen. It was just introduced, so just a minor correction. That's to take up time here. I can't get my thing to -- just give me one minute, okay? My software is not working here. I'm going to read from the yellow thing, because it's just not working. Move approval of the minutes as requested corrected. Second item is Administration Public Works Committee met this evening, and we ask your approval of the payroll, May 2nd through May 15, $2,708,198.54. Through May 29, the payroll, $2,752,062.95. The City of Evanston bills through June 14, $5,830,986.25. Credit card activity, $169,437.21. We ask your approval to purchase three replacement vehicles. One of those vehicles includes a trailer from Rush Truck Center of Northern Illinois in the amount of, I think it's, I wish I had my notes, in the amount of $205,609, the amount of $55,180, and is that it? That's it. All right, that's for action tonight. Sorry about this. Contract with Wentworth Tire Service for tire repair services for one year with a two-year extension. One year is at $24,672. We ask your approval for contract with Rousch Infrastructure LLC for Isabella Street Bridge Deck Rehabilitation Project. This is in the amount of $245,870. Amendment number one is requested for approval to the engineering services contract with ESI consultants for the Isabella Street Bridge Deck Rehabilitation Project. This is Phase 3, and it's in the not-to-exceed amount of $40,063.91. Funding for the 2016 Special Assessment Alley Improvements is requested, and that is in the amount of $129,000. Renewal of our line of credit with First Bank and Trust in the amount of $4.9 million. This is for use in the Dumpster Dodge in the Chicago Main TIF districts. This is just a request from staff to accept this and place on file. Claims true-up fee, a third-party administration of general liability and workers' compensation claims. The true-up fee amounts to $22,120. This exceeds the annual administration fee of $85,000 from January 1 through December 31, 2015. We ask your approval for payment of Evanston Cradle-to-Career in the amount of $50,000. Next, we ask approval of the council for creating the Robert Crown Community Center Maintenance Fund. This is a fund that will be based on providing for long-term infrastructure maintenance and will be paid for out of revenue generated by the new center. Next is approval of a Sidewalk Cafe for Smiley Brothers Brewing Company. This is an additional This is an additional addition to the ones that they currently have on private property. This is on the public way. It's a first-time request for their use of the public way and that is for approval. Sidewalk Cafe also is being requested by Panera Bread. That's for approval. Sidewalk Cafe for Cup-A-Tall Coffee and Eatery, that is also a first-time request and it's for action. Storefront Modernization Program, application for 2012, Central Street for Linds and Vale. It's for an amount not to exceed $9,026.75. There are new owners there and this is from the Economic Development Fund's Business District Improvement Fund. Next, we ask your approval for Resolution 41R16, which authorizes the manager to execute Contract Amendment Number Two with the Residential Solid Waste Services Agreement, correcting a previous error, reducing the monthly bill to $133,859.75. Group will reimburse us $25,501.77 for money overpaid. Resolution 46R16 is a sculpture easement at 525 Kedzie Avenue. We will forgive any easement fees and this will be bought and paid for and maintained by the developer. Ordinance 72016 is approval of a special assessment 518 for alley paving for the alley north of Reva Place and east of Ridge Avenue. This is in the amount, total alley cost is $304,972.20. Just so you know, the committee will be getting some additional information regarding the math on all these. Ordinance 73016 approving a special assessment 51519 for alley paving for the alley north of Greenwood and east of Darrow. The total amount of the construction cost is $285,035. Ordinance 74016 is also for introduction and approves a special assessment 1520 for alley paving for the alley north of Greenwood Street and east of Dodge Avenue. The total estimated cost of the project is $259,910.50. We ask your approval for introduction for Ordinance 76016 authorizing 2016 A and B General Obligation Bond issues. A is not to exceed $14 million and 2016 B, General Obligation Refunding Bond, not to exceed $8,100, did I say 14 million? This is for introduction. Ordinance 68016 is also for introduction and I'm going to ask the council to agree to suspend the rules because this is a decrease in licenses and for action. And that is Ordinance 68016 decreasing the number of Class D liquor licenses for the restaurant called Tai Sudoku. And that's reducing the number of D licenses from 58 to 57. And so, okay, so that's at 1016 Church Street. That's for introduction, suspension, and action. Ordinance 19016 amends the city code, this is for action, amends the city code sections relating to the City of Evanston's adopted plumbing code. It includes 10 amendments and this has been approved by the Illinois Department of Public Health and the, reviewed and approved by them and now we're being asked to approve it. Ordinance 52016 amends subsection 346P3 of the city code to allow for the sale of wine in 22-ounce containers for off-site consumption for current Class P3 liquor license holders. This is for the cider brewer whereby cider falls under the wine definition and 22-ounce containers are typical in the cider industry. Ordinance 54016 increases the number of Class C liquor licenses for Tara and Vine, doing businesses Tara and Vine. This is located at 1701 Maple Avenue, increases the number of licenses to 21. Ordinance 57016 increases the number of Class C licenses for Cup-A-Tall, doing businesses Cup-A-Tall Coffee and Eatery, increases the number of Class C licenses to 23. A15 is Ordinance 58016, increasing the number of Class D liquor licenses for 1560 Oak Banquet Facilities, doing businesses Oak Banquet Facilities. This is an authorized D license, increasing them to 58 and this is also known as the Museum of Time and Glass. Planning and Development Committee met this evening and asks your approval for grant renewal for Affordable Housing Fund to the Alliance to End Homelessness. It's a renewal grant for a required management information system by HUD for $18,500. Resolution 43R16 designates a portion of Oakton Street between Ridge Avenue and Barton Avenue with the honorary street name sign Clara Hairston-Pate Way. Ms. Pate was the principal of Oakton School. It doesn't say that here, but anyway, just that is for approval this evening. Resolution 44R16 designates the portion of Colfax Street between Prairie Avenue and Brown Avenue with the honorary street name Mailman Tom Pedroza Way. Resolution 45R16 designates a portion of Church Street between Brown Avenue and Dodge Avenue with the honorary street name sign Samuel Johnson Place. Ordinance 70016 grants major relief for one additional dwelling unit, balconies, and building lock coverage at 493 and 495 Sheridan Road. This is for introduction. Alderman Braithwaite, I believe, has asked for suspension of the rules for this, so I'm going to move introduction, suspension, and action. Ordinance 69016 granting a special use for a single-family detached dwelling at 1100 Florence Avenue. Ordinance 51016 amending the special use approval for scoreboards at Rocky Miller Baseball Park and Sharon Drysdale Soccer Field at 1501 Central Street for action. For action also is 1571 Maple Avenue Plan Development Extension.
Alderman Rainey, could you remove that, please?
That is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Human Services met last week and requests your approval for Resolution 47R16, a six-month lease for studio space at Noise Cultural Arts Center with Eric Bochem, running through December 31, 2016. Ordinance 17016, mobile food vehicle regulations, suspension of the rules is requested, introduction and action is therefore requested. Madam Mayor has made some very good appointments tonight to the Arts Council, Pope Washington Nushi, Commission on Aging Donna Feldman, MWEBE Development Committee Jean Murphy and Ken Rogers, Public Safety Civil Service Commission Casey Nathan, and reappointment to the Library Board, Socorro Clark and Tori Friedman. With that, I move the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Wilson, I believe you have an item.
P eight. Item P eight is Ordinance 61016, 1571 Maple Avenue Plan Development Extension. The developers requesting a one-year extension primarily due to the prior persistence of litigation, which has now been resolved. Move approval?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 61016. Does anyone want to speak to it? All right, City Clerk, would you, Alderman Rainey?
No, no.
Okay. Watch it down there. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, the motion passes. All right, I believe that was the only item up for debate. Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, do we have any provision in our meetings for new business?
All of the wards.
Not funny business, but, pardon me? Well, but I would like to ask the manager a question regarding the fees for the signs, for the honorary street signs.
Why don't you just go ahead and ask him?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, do we charge the honorees the sign fees?
No. Alderman or any members of the council, there are usually benefactors that are in support of this and that is where those fees come from. So if the council wishes to change that schedule, it's a de minimis amount.
No, I don't want to change it, but there was some confusion regarding the fees tonight. So I just wanted to make sure that nobody had to pay for anything when they're being honored.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. We are now at Call of the Wards, Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam. Oh, Mayor, I couldn't get my mic on, I'm sorry. I just have a couple of things. Number one, I think that Alderman Braithwaite and I sponsored a meeting last Thursday, the Second and Fifth Ward, a community meeting to discuss advance and with neighbors in terms of how they would like to see funds dispersed or at least the kinds of things, improvements that they would like to see for that area. And so a report will be forthcoming with that. Very good meeting and well-attended. The second thing is that I'd like to invite all of you, if you'd like to come, this coming Thursday, the 16th is a regular Fifth Ward meeting. We will be doing a follow-up on taking our communities back or really controlling our blocks and our neighborhoods. Staff from legal, police, and the health department will be there again to answer questions and to work with block club leaders and neighbors in terms of the kinds of things that can help people be in control of the areas and where they live. And then, last but not least, is on Friday night, the Second Annual Evanston Sings, as sponsored by Evanston Onnit, will be at the high school at 7:00 PM. And this year, we have a wonderful addition. Some of you may know, if you ever listened to Gospel Radio, that there are African-American churches in Chicago who were pioneers for that. And so the concert will be sponsoring four of those churches in terms of their contribution, in terms of getting music out as well as information out to the African-American community over the decades. And when you add all their years together, it's 183 years. So we're happy to be able to do that. And one of the people, and you may know this name, Reverend Clay Evans, who is 91-years-old, will be there to receive one of the awards. So tickets are $15. I have some available if anybody wants to come. We would love to have you. And remember, this is money raised to be able to employ more children for the Mira Summer Youth Program.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sixth Ward meeting scheduled for this month, I believe is June 24th, has been rescheduled for July 21st, I believe. I lost my page. Let's see, yes, sorry, July 28th, the fourth Thursday in July, 7 o'clock. The location to be determined. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Revelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to request that we put an item on the council agenda, a proposal to open the Harley-Clark Mansion for one day only, to allow groups and individuals with an interest in developing proposals for the use of the building, basically to allow these groups to walk through the house, to assess the condition of the building and its potential uses. And I would suggest that those interested in gaining access to the house on this one day would be asked to make a reservation in advance.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, we sent out postcards for a meeting at the outpost on June 15 regarding the redevelopment of Brummel Park. Many people have not yet received those. They were sent out on May 31st and it's just, they were placed at the post office May 31st. So I want to make an announcement, it's on the website. June 15, Wednesday, at the outpost, Ridgeville Park District, Brian Rosinsky and myself are going to talk with neighbors about the reconstruction of Brummel Park Tot Lot. And hopefully, everybody will come and we've done emails, et cetera, but the postcards seem to be wanting. Also, on Thursday, June 16, environmental issues in James Park will be discussed at 6 o'clock at the Levy Center. So hopefully, everybody will come who has an interest in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Miller.
I'd like to make the formal reference to staff to consider the Levy's possible lease of the Howard Outpost. I don't know if we want to consider that as part of the discussion of economic development as far as Howard is concerned or if we do it at AP&amp;W, considering it's city property, either way is fine with me. But I'd like to actually have a final answer to give the Levy's, considering that they're kind of in limbo with their proposal going forward.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Well, I think, I don't want to create a big discussion about this, but we have, we have no basis to lease at this time. So there, I mean, I know that they have a lawyer and, but just because you want to lease something doesn't mean you get to lease it. So we don't have any paperwork from them other than their proposal for a restaurant.
What we can do is, we can put an item on the agenda, authorizing staff to...
We referred it to the economic development, seven Aldermen are on that committee.
Correct. And, you know, and it failed at that point, but the circumstances have changed and I think we should reopen the discussion of what to do with the Howard Street outpost with them.
At that meeting, I will make sure that's on the economic development agenda.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm a little bit confused. You made a reference, Alderman Miller, to staff to put that on...
Yeah, we'll do the economic development agenda, that's fine.
Okay. I'd very much like to see that as well. I think, looking at it from the beginning, when we invited people to respond to our letter of interest or whatever it is called, Mr. City Manager, the Levy's responded to that and I think I'd like to see what we can do about leasing the outpost to them. I think they have stuck with this and I feel strongly about that. I also want to thank everyone for coming to the joint First and Fourth Ward Meeting at the library to discuss Fountain Square. We had a nice turnout, really good presentation and look forward to that coming to council, I think, in July. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, as well. Thank you for leading us in a moment of silence for the families and friends and victims of the recent shooting in Florida. This past weekend, we had a wonderful showing of solidarity in our community, led by the Live in Peace, a group of men who had a community picnic Saturday at Mason Park. And as a follow-up, we have another community picnic again around awareness and bringing the community together, being hosted by Opal, and that's going to be from 11 to 2:00. You're all invited to attend.
On the 25th.
That's this Saturday.
June 25th.
June 25th. What did I say?
You didn't say.
Work with me, it's been a long day. Okay. So I'll try it again. This Saturday is June 25th. This Saturday is June 25th, right?
No, next Saturday.
Next Saturday is June 25th. All right, so for anyone watching, next, thank you, thank you all. Next Saturday, June 25th, will be the picnic. It's going to be a very busy day, because you have Man Up at 7 to 11 at Robert Crown, and then this picnic from 11 to 2, and then you also have the Northwestern picnic from, what is that, 4 to...
6, I believe it is.
4 to 6, so that's why I'm all confused. Thank you. The other thing is, again, to the Levis, and I think it's been brought up, so I'm glad that it's going to be a topic at economic development for discussion. So, that's all.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Several weeks ago, we had an anti-gun rally downtown in Fountain Square, and it was, there were a number of good speakers who were there, and given what's just happened, and also what's continuing to occur in Chicago, I just urge people to find an organization to work with. We had an excellent speaker from People for a Safer Society, they're working very much, led by Denise Stoneback, who's working very much here in Illinois, taking small steps but moving, making some progress. So I think that we all need to continue to push forward, and even though the steps are small, we have to make some progress on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have comments, call for Call of the Ward and another...
Call my ward. I'd like to also thank everyone who came out to that joint meeting. We got some good input, and I think we're going to have an excellent and exciting project to put on the table for the Fountain Square and the adjacent property. In addition, in line with what Alderman, I think Braithwaite and Nguyen just mentioned, it's my understanding that the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has provided some additional guidance on what can be done with regard to the rules and regulations on carrying weapons. So I'd like to refer that to the Law Department, to report back to APW on how that impacts what we are able to do, and if that provides us with some additional opportunities to draw up some guidelines for what our expectations are in Evanston as far as guns are concerned.
Should we do that in APW?
It would be APW, right?
Would we do that to APW?
I just said that.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
When do you have a motion for this?
So that's my ward report, and I have a motion for the rest of the council. Motion to convene into executive session pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A. I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel litigation and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C1, C11, and C21.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.